And yeah, I mean, do we, does it appear that we have most of the presenters, the applicants for the items on the agenda?
They're here.
Yeah, they're all here. Okay, so we know if the applicants are all able to be present, it's likely that most of the people that wanted to make a public comment would have the opportunity and yes, Larry indicated they can appeal if there's because there's obviously we posted all the notices correctly and we did everything within our best efforts to make the meeting possible. So yeah, we can legally proceed.
We're recording now then.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and get started. Thanks to everybody who's waited for us to get this thing going. I don't know why my phone decided it needed to start talking when I did. That's embarrassing. I'm sorry for that. We'll go ahead and call to order the planning commission meeting for tonight, September 15th, 2020. All expected members of the planning commission are present this evening. Thank you for your patience while we got things started. Let me just go ahead and read our little notice to start out with, due to the increased threat of serious illness and loss of life by the rapid spread of the COVID-19 virus. The Chair of the Western Planning Commission has determined that conducting this planning commission meeting at the City Hall or at another anchor location is likely to contribute to the spread of COVID-19 and would present a substantial risk to the health, safety and welfare of the city's residents, participants and observers. Therefore pursuant to Utah Code 52 dash four dash two oh seven four, the Western Planning Commission hereby declares that the meetings of this public body will be held only electronically until further notice. This determination will expire in 30 days from the date the Chair of the Planning Commission signs the written determination. Now with that out of the way, we're going to move on to our first item on the agenda tonight, which is our consent calendar. Anybody have anything they want to bring up about the previous, the minutes from the previous meeting?
I thought they looked good and I'd make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner England, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion to the motion? Hey, seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Excellent. Moving on to our first public hearing, this is for the Granger Medical Office at 9,001 South, 3,200 West. This is a condominium conversion in a PO zone. The Granger Medical Clinic, Jeremy Mitchell is the applicant. The floor is yours, sir.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you to the mayor, West Jordan City and Mr. Gardner for allowing me this opportunity and us this opportunity. We're excited to spend a few minutes with you. Just first off, I'd like to make sure everybody can hear me at least if. Okay, wonderful.
We're good to go.
Thank you. Yes, just to follow up here and continue with this opportunity, but Granger has had a strong presence in West Jordan for many, many years and had the opportunity recently to expand adjacent to our existing building with a smaller additional building on this property here. We're excited about this new building and it was recently completed here at the end of May. We've chosen as we've, the intention with this building was to convert this to a condominium so that therefore we can have the opportunity to continue a longstanding partnership we've had with a physical therapy group who has been a tenant in our existing West Jordan building for many, many years who had wanted to be involved in this project and as such move forward with the opportunity to convert this new smaller building to a condominium. And that's the, the process and the reason why we're here tonight. We've gone through the application process and the submittals to get to this point and just hope for your approval and recommendation as we move forward with the conversion of this condo building. Are there any questions?
I don't even need to be here. He just did my job for me. I think we're good for now. It doesn't look like anybody's got anything, so we'll, we'll bring you back up if we have questions later. Or in response to any potential public comments, moving along this is for staff, we're going to go back to more, I'm supposed to be at the top here.
No, I'm taking this tonight. So this is on the corner. It's a new building like Jeremy said on the corner, 90th and 32. And really the site won't be changing, the building size, the building look, no landscaping, parking, storm drain, anything will be changing. All they're doing is condominiumize the, the internal building into three units that will be for sale, as he said. It kind of cut out, but there's a doctor group that wants to buy one of them. I think they're going to put the others up for sale. So it really gives an opportunity for that medical profession to own their own unit. And this is of course rendering on what it, what have, or what was submitted at the site plan, but the building is a nice looking building and staff has found that it meets all provisions of the 2009 city code recommends approval of this.
Okay, any questions for Larry? Okay, starting now super quiet today. We'll go ahead and open this up to the public. This is our first public hearing. If you're here to speak on this item, just reach down to the bottom. There should be a little button on the bottom tab that allows you to raise your hand so that you can let us know that you are interested in speaking. Should you desire to speak on this item, you'll have three minutes to share your thoughts and time is not yours. I don't see any interest in this item, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing for this item, bring this back to the planning commission for any further discussion or motion.
I'll make a motion if there's no input.
Are you or sir?
Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I moved that the planning commission approved the preliminary mine, minor subdivision condo conversion plat for Granger Medical Office Building, subject to the conditions of approval listed on page two of the staff report.
I second that.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Bloom. Any discussion to the motion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we are unanimous. Thank you for your report and thank you for your time, sir. Moving on to the next item, we have the Mr. Carwash, 5512 West, 78, 800 South for a preliminary site plan in an SC2 zone, Terraform Companies LLC is the applicant. Do we have someone here on behalf of the company?
Yeah, I'm not sure who that is, if they can raise their hand or if staff can tell me.
It's Elliot Smith.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Smith, looks like the floor is yours, sir.
Okay, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, can you see me?
No, we cannot.
I don't know why.
And we just lost him.
I just promoted him to panelist, so.
Oh.
Oh, that is the first promotion I've had in a long time. Thank you. There we go.
Oh, there you go.
Now I'm up. Okay, I can see everybody. Thank you for your time tonight, everyone. I appreciate it. Let's see, I'll share my screen here. So you can see the, the presentation. Hang on. Let's see if this works. Okay. Everyone see my screen there?
Yes, we can.
Okay, let me get the PowerPoint up. There we go. How's that?
You're good to go, sir.
Okay, let me back up to the first slide here. I appreciate Ray putting this together, but this is a proposal for, first of all, just by way of background. I'm one of the partners at Terraform Companies. We are a
net lease retail development firm headquartered here in Salt Lake City. We do retail development for retail tenants throughout the country and Mr. Carwash is one of the tenants we do quite a bit of work for. Do you need me to state my address for the record? No? Okay, I'll just proceed then. So this is a proposal to put a Mr. Carwash branded tunnel car wash at 5512 West, 7800 South, property is owned SC2. The owner of this property, as you know, the whole Highlands Commercial Subdivision is Peterson Development. We're working with Paul Stringham. That is the representative there. I'm sure you've worked quite a bit with them over the years on this project. So there, the landlord actually, Mr. Carwash is the tenant, and we're just a preferred developed performance for Carwash, so they have engaged us to run the approvals and manage the construction of their building for them. So that's a little background on who we are, our involvement. I'll move to the next slide now. You can see this proposal is for lot 208. Right along 7800 South. There is a land use map and a zoning map surrounded by a community commercial and high density residential to the north in the neighborhood on the south side of 7800 South. Here is the preliminary site plan that we've submitted, which we've received comments back from staff. I'll move to the next slide here. The landscape plan is right there. One of the main and really only comments we've received from staff so far is that one that you see right there to increase the front landscape area to 10 feet. We have no problem doing that. We can tweak the site plan and make some adjustments, which our consultant team is already working on to accommodate that. We just have to pick them about six feet there in that area. So we're working to comply with that, not a problem. And another one that's not noted here, but we need to increase the landscape buffer on the east side of the property to a minimum of eight feet, which we have plenty of room over here to do that. So we're making that adjustment to the site plan as well. And there are some colored elevations of the proposed building. The building itself is, just to give background on the company, you know, Mr. Carwash has now close to 300 car washes nationwide. The building is about 5,000 square feet. It can accommodate five cars comfortably. The it's about 132 feet. They staff their buildings with two or three employees maximum. And that is about all of the information I have regarding the site plan and the business. If you have any other questions, I'll hang around and just let me know. The only question that I had that came to mind is anybody else is thinking about raising their hand was if you want to back up a slide to the site plan. That's fine right there. What's your connectivity issue? Do we, are we going to have any kind of connectivity between these different parcels? Is that part of the conversation there? That hasn't been part of the conversation. We haven't received that as feedback, so the idea is cars to enter here, they queue right here. And, and putting the queue line here is just so it doesn't back up onto any major street, because as you've probably seen with tunnel car washes, they can get fairly busy during peak times. So we're trying to accommodate three lanes in the queue area here. And then they wrap around here and then they come out of the tunnel on the north and then they have the option to exit right here. Or go into the vacuum stalls here. And this is a bidirectional drive aisle here, so they can pull in here and go out this exit as well. But as far as connectivity between other parcels, that wasn't something that was brought up at the pre-application meeting, nor was it a comment on the initial comments we received. I'm sure, I'm sure Ray can address that on his, in his comments. Any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I have one.
Go for it.
I'm wondering why you're seeking both preliminary and final approval at this time?
I suppose just there's no reason, just trying to do both, just to save time in the process. Did I miss something? I only see that we're having a recommendation for a preliminary site plan on this tonight.
I can answer that.
It says final approval granted by staff and all the requirements. So we're not doing a final approval. We're just doing a preliminary. Final will be handed by staff, right?
Right.
The applicant is seeking final approval at this time.
I'll talk about that.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, let's turn the time over to Ray.
Okay, members of the planning commission. Is the applicant did submit for preliminary and final site plan approval. Typically, the, the plans that come before you are just for preliminary only. This one came in as a preliminary and final. The plan set was fairly complete. But in looking at that, I think there were a couple of issues that still needed to be ironed out and that was with respect to that 10 foot landscaping area and the engineering department wanted to take a good close look at the, the plans. And so even though the applicant has recommended, or has requested preliminary and final staff has recommended that the planning commission only grant preliminary at this time and just leave the, the final approval at the staff level like we do most of the, the plans. In terms of the timing, there's really not a whole lot of difference between running it through as a preliminary and final and then just as a preliminary. So it's just basically that the staff approves the, the, the final site plan. As far as the interconnectivity between the, the two sites, there, there was no discussion on, on that, but just given the way that the site is designed with that serpentine drive aisle pattern to it, we felt that it'd be best in this situation that there not be connectivity to that, because it really, that area that's on the west side of the, the plan is basically for vacuums. And so it's, I don't know, there's really need to provide that connectivity to other uses. Part of that is, is that on the north side, you have that, the drive aisle that's basically an interior street. So that's, that serves as the, as kind of the linkage to the other businesses that are adjacent to that. So like I say, we just really didn't see a need to connect those two together. As far as the overall site plan, the only recommendation that we're looking at at this time is just that they increase the, that front landscaping from, I think it's like four and a half feet to at least 10 feet on that front, just to give more of a landscape presence along 7800 South. There's no street connection to 7800 South, just given its proximity to the intersection and and we think that's, that will work just fine. The drive aisles and the queuing area for the, the traffic entering it, I think there's adequate area room for that, but we just don't see any other issues with, with this site plan. Are there any questions?
I mean, he did mention, sorry, he did mention that they were adding on to the landscaping in the back as well. Did we want to add that into the approval conditions?
That was on the, it wasn't on the back, it was on that side, on the east side. Yeah, yeah, that would be fine.
I had another, I guess more of a comment than a question, but I'm not a big fan of the bidirectional vacuum area, bidirectional traffic in the vacuum area. That was some, somehow we could turn that into a one-way. I think that'd be a lot better. I don't know how you'd do that, though.
Yeah, I don't, just given this, how the site's laid out, where that building's, where the building's located, I don't know how you could do that.
I don't know that we have it. That's not even a precedence that we've set before. I can't think of a, of another car wash that we've approved in my time on here that has bidirectional, they're all, or has mono-directional, they're all bidirectional.
Right.
And sorry, Commissioner, I missed that, that first thing when I read through it, that is a preliminary final. You were right on that. Sorry, I missed that. Any other questions for staff?
I have two quick questions.
Go for it.
Sometimes the, the drawings are a little bit deceiving. On the exit, that appears very, very close to that curve, the corner, especially with a tree that will potentially, will eventually be a rather mature tree. What concerns or how has it been resolved that we're not going to see line of sight? Is, is that a potential issue right there?
Yeah, trees typically, if they're just a deciduous tree, they typically don't interfere with, with site trying or the line of sight. But we certainly can take a look at that as part of that, the final approval and just make sure that there's no issues with that. We can run that by the transportation engineer.
I appreciate, I, I just see people probably taking that turn really quick and folks turning left out of that parking area are going to have to crane their neck pretty well to see anybody coming.
Can you all see the site plan? Because I can't.
No, he took down his presentation, but if it's in, it's in the, it's in the packet.
Okay, okay.
A second question I had, and I appreciate, yes, please consider that as you go through for the final approval on staff's end. I'm trying to track the, the added landscaping. As I look at the landscaping plan, I like it. It's, it's clean. It's certainly 10 feet from 7800 South, though not from the property line, probably 10 feet from back of sidewalk, maybe, again, not from property line. It's only an extra six feet, but that is extra watering, extra maintenance, some other items along that line. What is, what is staff's concern about requiring that 10 foot minimum?
You know, as for, for us, it's just enhanced, it's just additional landscaping out in the front so that when you're driving along 7800 South, you just don't get, you know, a little bit of landscaping and then it just goes right into into a paved drive aisle. I think just a little enhance, a little enhancement along that, that front setback would, would help out with that. So that's why, that's just simply why, it's not a, an ordinance requirement, because your setbacks are to the building and not to the drive aisles. So I think that they, they meet the minimum on-site landscaping, but I think just to step it up a little bit, I think it would be helpful just to have that additional landscaping.
My, my recommendation, at least for, for the commissioners, as we consider this, I, I'm fine with what's shown on the plan. It's not a hill I'm willing to die on. So if anybody else supports that or is interested in considering that, I'll, I'll leave that. So that's my questions. Appreciate it.
We can definitely bring that in our discussion after the public hearing. Any other questions for staff? Okay, we'll go ahead and open this up to the public for comment. If there's anybody who would like to share their thoughts, please wave your hands now. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing for this item, bring this back to the planning commission for any further discussion or, or emotion. For my part, I, I have to say, I agree with Commissioner Allen. I think we need to be in a water conservation state of mind. And we've got, we've got trees on there already. Why do we need to add more watering needs? I, I think it looks good the way it's being presented right now, but that's just, that's my sense, but I do, I do agree with Commissioner Allen on this.
I got just one quick comment. I don't necessarily disagree with that, but I'd like to see a little bit of a more of a buffer there too, just to, to kind of stand off of the, the road compared to the, the business. It doesn't necessarily have to be something that's water wise. I mean, I think we could even do some gravel or something that's water wise that way.
I'm, I'm just trying to think about what's across the street by that little medical office in the, in the Del Taco and all that stuff. And I don't recall there being a lot of trees out there. There might be like grass in the park strips in that area. But I don't think there's a lot of trees. I don't drive that area very often. I know some of you live out that way. Maybe you can speak to that just to refresh my brain, but it seems to me like we're requiring a little bit more on this north side than we require on the south side.
I'd agree with that assessment. I drive down that area probably about once a week and it just, my recollection is it's very, very open. If there are trees, they're still very small, so maybe over time we'll see some maturing, but as of right now, it feels very open.
It's very open. It's very bare. It's a daily thing for me. I mean, there is some desert scape that's also options instead of just trees.
Which if you're driving down 78th right now, the Del Taco is zero scape with trees and the discount tire is grass and trees. So you kind of have a mix of both, but it does appear 10 feet setbacks there on both of those businesses to the, what is that, the south? So.
Yeah, I think if we even use some sort of a desert scape, I think that would be, be a good idea.
Well, again, and Ray pointed this out, the setbacks are the requirement to the building, not to the driveway. So this is a different layout for this parcel than what we've got across the street. So we have our 10 feet in play, you know, I'm just, I don't know. Maybe we're making way too much out of this, but it seems to me like this is more than sufficient in my, in my page. Scott, go ahead.
So I believe there's a section in our, in our zoning ordinance that talks about perimeter landscaping next to drive aisles and parking lots. And I believe that, that minimum distance just for plant survivability is eight feet. And trying to pull that up, I believe it's 13 dash 13 dash nine C3 talks about the minimum material dimensions of landscaped areas shall be eight feet unless otherwise determined by the zoning administrator. So perhaps as a middle ground, instead of the 10, I would go with, with eight. And maybe, maybe Larry and Ray are already aware of that, but and maybe I'm, again, I'm kind of shooting from the hip here, so perhaps it's not quite applicable here, but I know that in the past years ago, that's, that's sort of what we looked at. And it's, yes, it's about aesthetics, but it's also about the survivability of landscaping in those areas. If it's four, four feet or four and a half feet, the microclimate gets so hot there, it, it'll just scorch the, the, the plants that are actually in that area. So something for the commission to consider.
It's good to know. It's good information. Commissioner Allen, you just unmuted yourself.
Yeah, I, I want to follow up on that, because I, I read through that ordinance as well and Scott, you perfect comment, because it made me think through this. For staff's comments, when we say increase front landscape area width to 10 foot minimum, are we talking from property line from back of sidewalk?
We were talking from property line. So let me interject something. A couple of years ago, the council passed a arterial street beautification. And so the, so anything in back of the sidewalk is required to be 10 feet on an arterial street. So Ray's following the ordinance to the T and so there's really, there's really no discussion on eight or 10. It needs to be 10 feet, so.
But I think that answers that question. If we've got a, an ordinance and a code to follow, then we follow it. The applicant said that he's fine with that.
And you, you'll probably remember that, Matt, when that came through the planning commission a few years back, the city council wanted to see approved appearance along arterial streets. And so what we did then was have anything that developed along an arterial street required a 10 foot landscape buffer behind the sidewalk. So it's all about the appearance of the arterial streets.
Well, I guess that nips that conversation in the bud. Any other discussion here, guys? Thank you, Larry.
We already had the public comment section.
We did.
I can't remember. Okay.
Yeah, we're done with that. Please do.
I moved that the planning commission approved the preliminary site plan for the Mr. Carwash building located at 5512 West, 7800 South in an SC2 zone, subject to the approval conditions listed on page two of the staff. and an SC2 zone, subject to the approval conditions. Listen on page two of the staff.
And you want to include Commissioner Bloom's additional condition for that east side landscape expansion?
Sure. Remind me, refresh my memory on what that was.
The applicant mentioned it as well, just that he was going to widen that, that east side strip to whatever he's recommending. It wasn't on his paper there, but he mentioned it and she wanted to add that as a condition.
Okay, adding a sixth preliminary approval condition on the east side landscaping increase.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner England, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Any discussion to the motion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right. Well, thank you for enduring our conversation about trees and landscaping. But we do appreciate your, your business and we look forward to seeing the building come out. Moving right along, we have the West Jordan Box in lock on 5947 West Danan Way. Conditional use permit for a warehouse for self-storage and review of street-facing bay doors in an M1 zone. Riverside One LLC, Ron Johnson is our applicant.
I'm gonna know who that is on here. Oh, I got it.
Someone raising a hand here.
Could be Steve.
Hi, can, any commission, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, I'm Steve Tripp. I'm a partner of Ron Johnson and, and I own Trico Realty Investment. We're developing it co-jointly with Ron and Riverside One. He's out of town and unable to zoom to join us.
Okay, perfect. Well, then the floor is yours, sir.
Great. I've got, I don't know, Ken, are you on? Kent just sent me a text saying he couldn't open the, the email I sent him today. I guess he's just figuring that out. Kent, did you, were you able to open it?
I'm on, but I haven't been able to open it yet.
Okay, I have it up on my screen. I'm not sure how to screen share exactly.
We can get you promoted to panels, which it looks like that is happening right now.
Okay, so.
You should be able to search here now.
Can you see my screen?
We can. Either floor is yours, sir.
Okay, great. So let me pull down to the site plan. That's a landscape site plan as well. We're proposing a multi-story storage center. It's our second location here in Utah. We, the one in Salt Lake. We are directly off Mountain View Corridor. The parcel that we have purchased is one that's been separated by Mountain View Corridor. So Mountain View Corridor kind of drew at that, that, that angle on the, on the east side of the project. We've, the, the building, the front building, he asked for elevation today. I'm not sure what else you'd like to see. This is an elevation of the three office building. That's got the spandrel glass, also has the, the red metal siding that, that we've used on multiple locations. You can also see, I think the question was, the, the only question came back from staff that I saw was on these garage doors, on screening from the garage doors, which I think we have 12 trees between the street and the garage doors. So I wasn't sure if there was something else that, that the plan would like to see. He asked for me to show all elevations. So this is the south and the west elevations of the project. These are each one individual buildings. We just build up projects for this in West Valley where it's got the columns that are different colors with the split face columns, the smooth block, and then the split face on the bottom to add some contrast to the long walls. All of the interior, the door are all facing to the interior, so it's more of a fortress style with the exterior walls, what you'll see from, from Mountain View Corridor and the front road. There's, there's multiple buildings there, so that's, that's kind of a run through the buildings. Again, going back to the site plan, these are the trees that are designed to screen the garage doors from, from Dan and Way across the street. We are in kind of an industrial, a heavy industrial zone. We, I know some of the adjoining properties, I just took some pictures of those today. That's the adjoining property to us, the one across the street. And then there is an existing storage facility up the street that the doors are facing. And then I was a little surprised on his because it's got, I, I thought we were had no, were allowed no RV outdoor parking, but apparently he must have got a different condition. And other than that, I, I'm not sure. I apologize. I haven't done a lot of Zoom presentations, so it's probably pretty rough, but that's as good as I've got.
I, I think it was adequate. And if you haven't had to do that many presentations, then you're doing a good job because that seems to be my whole life right now. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, we'll go ahead and turn this over to Kent. Got anything else you want to add for it? And maybe you can address that RV parking question that he snuck in there. We can't hear you, Kent, if you're speaking. Did we lose him?
Okay.
There we go.
I was trying to share my screen, so let's try that again.
I think we gotta have Steve unshare his screen first.
Oh, okay, sorry. Share. There you go.
There you go. Now you should be able to do that, Kent.
Okay, I appreciate Steve's comments and sharing what the proposed, you know, buildings will look like, particularly from the street. That was the biggest concern that I could see. We didn't have an illustration of how the street-facing doors would appear from the street. The landscaping seems to be quite sufficient if it grows as planned to provide adequate screening from the street. So here's an aerial view showing the proposal, well, the, the project location. And as he mentioned, the Mountain View Corridor separated this property and making it eligible to receive or self-storage units because it's considered a regular shaped lot. And the, the land use map is light industrial and the zoning map is M1. So this proposed use isn't conforming with the land use and the zoning plans. Here is the site plan, which is detailed to see. And Steve provides some good detailed, more easily readable slides. Here is the, the main elevation from the street showing the, the two bay doors. As far as the outside storage, perhaps that other facility received approval before the, the current requirement of having a building on outside storage in the M1 zone. So if you have any particular questions, I'd be glad to answer them at this time. The applicant is also asking for two onsite one-bedroom apartments for, you know, maintenance and security of the site.
He mentioned something about the RV parking. Is that, what's the status of that?
They haven't proposed any RV parking or outside parking on this facility or at this facility.
It, it would be permitted, would it not, as long as it's not visible from the street?
Correct.
Okay. And then my follow-up is on those apartments that you just mentioned. Is that part of the existing building? Like is that the, the part of that second floor or is this additional little apartments that are going to be built in the backside of this? What's the, what's the, the story on that?
Yeah, they'll be close to the front. They'll look like, like regular storage units is my understanding. So they'll have a woodcar garage.
On that, on that elevation, if, if you, on the far side, there was two small garage doors, so they actually have garages go into and then they can walk up to their apartments. They could also walk up to their apartments from the main door, so they kind of have the ability to go down to their garage and out from the storage center as well.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, we'll go ahead and open this up to the public. If there's anybody here that is here to speak on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand now. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing aside and bring this back to planning commission for additional discussion or a motion.
This is my first time seeing this. Is this, obviously it's allowed because it hasn't been, I don't know, I've never seen a residence inside a storage unit.
It's, it's fairly common today to have that revision.
All right. I have no problem with that. It's just a little.
I like it.
Recomенд me is on. Very smart.
Yeah, based on my experience, it's actually quite common.
So I, I had a question. I apologize. I was late on. I'm, I'm still very slow with unmuting myself. Question for staff. I'm curious about the, the city easement that appears to be on this property but is not shown within the, the boundaries of the site plan. Am I interpreting that correctly or could you just give us a quick explanation on that?
Oh, you're probably referring to the detention basin up here in the north west corner of the property.
There's a, there is an access easement that runs south to access the city's property there on the south and west, the little rectangle down there.
Kent, that shown on previous slide you had up, if you, if you pull it back up, it goes to the well right there on the left side. That's, that's the easement the city has.
So I, I think the, the question I have is where that's not shown within the, and granted, this is a, a site plan as opposed to what I'm used to seeing, but it's not inside of the, the thick black border, which suggests to me it's not part of the, in this case, I guess, the site plan. Does that mean that's just entirely unimproved? Is that intended to be dedicated to the city? I assume we still, we have an easement already because there's a, a rec, a recording information on it. Was that status quo?
There's no proposal to improve that easement if it be, you know, through paving or otherwise.
If, if you wouldn't mind me interject, when I, when I purchased the property or when I helped Ron purchase the property, we looked through that easement in detail and the city has an easement in perpetuity and they have the responsibility to maintain it and to take care of it. They're the only ones using it. We, we're not allowed to use. We have to enter from a different spot, so they're, I mean, I'd love to sell it to the city if you guys want to buy it.
So with, with that in mind, where you've got the, the buildings, are you planning on putting a fence around the, the structure? So the fence essentially won't, if there is a fence, it's not going to block that.
Yes, there, there'll be a fence that just goes between those buildings. It's kind of a fortress style, so the road will go right up. We'll, we'll just be right off the road and probably do gravel or something to try to finish to that. And they'll just be a, a fence that'll go between the buildings, so we don't see the, the, the site right next to us is like a crane dumping yard. And then you've got all of the, the well garbage and equipment back there. So we're trying to make it so we actually can't see from our site to the other areas, to be honest.
Okay. So I, the only encouragement I would have with that is to staff as, as you go through and, and move forward on this, just ensure that that's remains graded in such a way that we can still take advantage of its, of its use. I'm sure we'll do that.
And it's currently asphalted.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yeah, you, you guys have asphalted it a while ago and maintained it and slurry seal it and plow it and the whole thing. So it's, it's currently being used by them in full capacity.
So bear in mind, commissioners, this is a conditional use permit and a application for landscaping to screen dock doors. So to avoid going into a timely or lengthy discussion about the site, you're not discussing that tonight. So.
I appreciate the reminder. I'd, I'd be happy to make a, a motion if that's all right.
Yeah, please do.
But before, can I ask Larry one question before you make a note, motion? Because this has been kind of confusing this process to me. Kent told me when I talked to him yesterday, because we've submitted the inventory in the final site plan as well, that this was the only thing that came before the planning commission. Larry, is that not correct?
That's true. Yes. So nothing else will come back to the.
All right, I'll go ahead and make that motion then. So based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit and accept the landscaping plan to be sufficient to screen street-facing bay doors.
I'll second that. Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Shelton. Any discussion to the motion? Am all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are unanimous yet again. Thank you. Moving right along. And get back over to the right screen here. Number five on our agenda tonight is Take Five Oil Change, 8980 South Redwood Road. Preliminary site plan and a preliminary subdivision plan and a conditional use permit for vehicle and equipment repair limited in SC2 zone, Wildcat One, West Jordan. Mitch Van, I'm gonna put you that. So Mitch is our applicant. The floor is yours, sir.
Is Christie attending? Christie Kennedy?
Yes, I am here as well.
And who, we have Jeremy Draper. Is he involved in this application?
I don't think so.
Or we'll, we'll get you on the public hearing for this, for this item, if that's what you're here for, just hang tight for us. It looks like we've got a Christie who's going to present for us. Is that what I heard?
So Mitch was actually going to present. Mitch is the developer. He, and I believe he is on the call. Let me see if I can't get.
I promoted him.
He said he just got disconnected. And see, Jeremy.
He's.
See, do you have something you can share with us while we're waiting for him? And then we can have, we have Kent Page fill in any gaps of information that we may need.
Yeah, of course. Let me, let me do, let me pull up this site plan for you.
Just so we have you for the record, Christie, will you just tell us your connection here so that we've got it for the record?
Yeah, so I am actually with Reeve and Associates, the civil engineering firm that's been working with Mitch on the, on the project. And and sorry, I, I'm not great at multitasking trying to pull this up. Okay. So as this, as this pulls up, it's a, it's a new concept coming to Utah. So the, the development group is, it's a drive-through only concept with an oil change facility. So I feel like it's super COVID appropriate. So the, the point being is, is the customer stays in their, in their vehicle as their oil is getting serviced. And, and so there are no, there's no waiting room. And there's, it's, it's called Take Five for a reason. It's, it's a quick service concept. So it's a new, it's a new concept as far as, as the service industry goes. I've actually got Mitch here connected if you wanted to take over Mitch.
Go right ahead.
I just realized I didn't. Okay. Mitch, are you? Okay.
Doesn't show that he has an audio, a microphone.
Please.
I apologize. I wasn't planning on presenting. Hold on.
Mitch, we can hear you. Go right ahead.
All right. Sorry about that, guys.
Welcome to the meeting.
I appreciate. I apologize for that. So yeah, my name is Mitch Vandigetch and I'm with Wildcat Partners. We are a new franchise for Take Five Oil Change. It's a new concept that they're franchising out of North Carolina. It's a drive-through oil change. They focus on fast, friendly and clean service. So kind of step different from other oil changes. All they do is oil change, air filters and coolant exchange. So that keeps the average car time to 10 minutes and under. So you don't get long lines and keeps the customers moving. So what we're requesting is put a site on the corner of Redwood and nine hundred south is for conditional use permit for the oil change business. Not sure if I'm able to share my screen. I've got the site of plan up. But as part of the development, we're planning on you having our site on the, or our building on the southeast corner and then on the southwest side. We're in the works of getting a co-tenant and we're, while we're seeking that co-tenant, we've got a couple of groups that we're in talks with and we're being very specific with them, what it will need to be and the requirements for things as far as parking, building size, all those parameters and as far as their employee numbers. So we're working on that. And we also have been talking with Smiths who has access to the west side of the, or who's to the west side of the property. And it's looking very favorable that we're going to be able to get cross access with them as well. So yeah, so once again, just appreciate y'all's time. And yeah, we're looking forward to getting into the area. This is going to be one of multiple Take Five locations that we're going to be looking at in the next couple of years.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
I have a question.
Go for it.
What type of co-tenant are you looking for?
We're specifically looking for coffee drive-throughs right now. For the main purpose of that is our main hours or main business is the lunchtime. So with a coffee shop, it would kind of alternate. At the same time, we have looked at the queuing analysis that even during the same time it would be sufficient. But we look at it as an advantage or a drive-through only. So they wouldn't have a walk-up window at all.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I, I may know the answer, but are, so are we just remodeling the existing buildings? Are we knocking everything down and starting over?
It'll be a demo and rebuild and including a new surface, pavement surface that currently is a Chevron. That's got a pretty, the pavement's pretty uneven and so we'll be demoing everything, including the existing car wash and removing tanks and everything and building a new building.
Great. Thank you.
Seems like an improvement to the corner to me. Any other questions for the staff, for the applicant? All right, Mr. Page, fill us in on the, the gaps that we need to know.
All right. I appreciate Mitch and Christie for their information. Yeah, this is on the northwest corner of the busy intersection of Redwood Road and ninety south. And let me see if I can share the screen. And it's a conditional use permit. They're, they're seeking for vehicle and equipment repair limited preliminary site plan and a preliminary subdivision plat. The land use map is community commercial and the zoning map is also community commercial. So we're online with the general plan and the zoning map. Here's an aerial view of the corner. Right now it's existing Chevron with car wash.
Kent, we can't see your screen. Now we can.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Yeah.
So you're probably all rather familiar of this site. Just to the north is the University Federal Credit Union. And to the, the west is a Smiths Fuel Center. We are highly encouraging the applicant to acquire a shared access agreement with Smiths. I think that would significantly improve the site circulation. Here's a preliminary site plan and then the applicant submit today showing kind of the stacking capabilities of the proposed drive-through and the stacking for the proposed take five oil change. Here's some elevations of the four sides of the take five oil change building. We have received any elevations for the other building. Here's a landscaping plan. It looks like it'll greatly improve the aesthetics of this intersection. So we're excited about this landscaping plan. And they're also proposing to have a preliminary subdivision plot, which are calling Wildcat T1 subdivision, because they need to dedicate some right of way. There's some property to the Redwood Road and particularly the ninety south right of way, which are UDOT roads. And again, it's a CUP, your conditional use permit for vehicle and equipment repair limited. And here are some suggestions for conditions of approval. Staff is uncomfortable with suggesting approval of this proposed drive-through or it also requires a conditional use. And we haven't properly notified or advertised it on the agenda for this evening. Particularly because of the uncertainties we have with drive-throughs today, including we are talk about Dutch Brothers. We would feel a lot more secure if we knew exactly what tenant it will be in determining, you know, how feasible or how appropriate this site plan is with this proposed drive-through. This is a small site, so there's not a whole lot of room for air and it's next to some busy roads. And the site circulation to the north with University Federal Credit Union is not very, what, not very good or it could be improved quite a bit. So for the, for that degree of uncertainty and because it hasn't been advertised as a conditional use for this drive-through, we would not recommend that this be approved at this time, but the, that the applicant come back through once a tenant is determined. So we can fine tune the, the site plan at that time, or at least have a conditional use permit for this proposed tenant.
That, that's a requirement, Kent. It'll have to happen whenever they find their tenant. It'll have to come back to the planning commission for a CUP on that building.
Yeah.
So can I ask a question about that? So we get them to come back. They've got ABC Coffee, whatever that's going to do this. And we get all excited and we approve this. What happens in the year when ABC Coffee goes out of business and now we've got somebody else coming in? Do they have to come back and get?
No. No, the conditional use permit for a drive up would run with the property as long, any kind of drive up could go in there. Whether it's ABC Coffee, Wendy's, Carl's Jr., Dutch Brothers. So.
So that is my question. So that, that brings me to my next question. Why do we need to make them wait? If we're going to give them approval based on, on the first tenant that will, that will exist for infinity for any additional tenant that may take it, why can't we just make a determination now whether or not a drive-through is appropriate?
And that's not the application. The application is a conditional use permit for a vehicle and equipment repair. It's not for a drive-up window for a fast food or coffee shop. So that, that's the reason.
Okay. So, but, but I guess my point more is that why do we need to make them wait till they have an actual tenant who's ready to take it as opposed to just when they're ready to?
Yeah, you can, they can come back at any time. It doesn't have to be when they get somebody to rent the building. That's probably more than likely when it'll happen. I don't see any reason why it can't be approved. It's just plain and simply not part of the application to.
Tonight, we can't consider it, but they don't have to get a tenant. That's what I wanted to make sure. It sounded like we had to have a tenant first. And I wanted to make sure that we didn't have to go down that road first. So, okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Okay, we'll go ahead and open this up to the public. You are here to speak on this item. Please feel free to raise your hand. We've got Jeremy Draper with his hand raised. I'm assuming you're still hoping to speak on this item.
Yes, Jeremy Draper. I'm actually with Reeve and Associates with the applicants on this item as well. So just here to answer any technical questions that you may have.
Thank you. Anybody else here to speak on this item tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing for this item. Bring this back to the planning commission for further discussion or motion. I have one question. Go for it. Being this is the drive-through, where are you going to dispose? Where are you going to store all of your hazardous materials such as your antifreeze, your used oil and that kind of stuff?
So on this, we've got, there's, I believe there's two used oil tanks that are stored in the storage area. Everything's contained within those that are drained, depending on the usage, probably about once a week. And all of the, as well as all the pits are just shallow pits that are self-contained and have pumps out. So there is no chance for any leaks. And antifreeze is stored in drums in the storage. Everything's above the ground and sealed in the storage area.
This may be kind of off the subject a little bit, but are they all going to be on a secondary containment? Where they're above ground? And is there going to be some sort of a barrier such as a masonry wall or something?
Yes, yes. There and there's a whole separate area, yes, blocking them off from the open operating area.
Okay, that's all I have. I got a question for staff on the parking. Is the number of parking stalls entirely driven by, by the lot size then? Or the, sorry, building size?
It's by the building size and the maximum number of employees per shift. So for take five oil change, they would need nine parking stalls and they're showing fourteen right now.
So the take five, what I, at least what I read in the, the report was they needed a maximum, or they needed nine. But they have a maximum of 10 people at, at the peak, which is a concern if 10 people come with their vehicles, but they only have nine stalls. My understanding is the other four are all supposed to be for the drive-through.
That's the, the idea is that all the customers would remain in their vehicles.
So we could potentially still have a couple of people parking over in the Smiths parking lot and walking over.
I think they, they stay in their vehicle the entire time. They never leave their vehicle. You park in the, the queuing areas and you just proceed forward as, as the service is done. It's not like a Jiffy Lube where you go out and wait in the waiting room or something like that. You never leave your vehicle.
Right. I apologize. I, I should clarify. I'm, I'm talking about the employees specifically.
Did you say the staff report has, says a maximum of, of 10 employees that have one time?
It does. Let's see if I can find it. It's in not condition two, preliminary site plan finding of fact criteria two.
I don't think they all work on the same shift though.
There's the max, maximum number of employees at one time for the drive-through oil change business is 10. But then it says three per bay in parentheses. So maybe that's just a typo.
That, that very well could be.
Okay. If that's typo, then my, my concern is taken care of. Any other discussion here? Anybody want to make a motion? Okay, I'll go ahead and do that. Based on the findings set forth in the staff report, I move that the planning commission approve the preliminary site plan, preliminary subdivision plat and conditional use permit for the take five oil change located at eighty nine eighty south Redwood Road in the SC two zone with the conditions of approval listed on page two of the staff report.
I'll second.
I think I should read page two and three. There are seventeen conditions of approval.
Is it, is it two and three?
Yes.
You are correct. Well, we'll, we'll include page three in that. Commissioner Bloom, are you okay with that amended? All right. We have a motion by myself, seconded by Commissioner Bloom. Any discussion to the motion?
Yeah, I, maybe I'm confused, but I thought the staff was recommending that we not approve it at this time.
No, only, only for the take five, not for the additional drive-through building.
Thank you.
Duncan, we're okay the way it's read, right?
Yes. Yeah, that's, that's good the way it's read.
Okay, perfect. Any further discussion to the motion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Well, we look forward to, to this, this new and improved corner, guys. Thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
This brings us to our final item. I know Gary's been waiting on just with bated breath, listening to our whole entire meeting. Parker Place Rezone seventy three ninety eight south Redwood Road, a rezone of 2.17 acres from an R38 SHO multi-family residential, eight units per acre maximum density with the senior housing overlay to R38 multi-family residential, eight units per acre maximum density. Mr. Cannon, it's been a while. Good to see you again. The floor is yours, sir.
Trying to get on there. Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Thank you. I again, I know you guys get tired of hearing me talk. I know I get tired of hearing me talk and I appreciate being, having the opportunity to present to you again. I want to first recognize the staff and my relationship with them. And we just completed what, what I feel is, you know, in, in 30 years of developing my finest project and that was Brinkerhop Bluffs. I don't know if any of you have had the opportunity to drive down and, and look at that off of thirteen, about seventy six south.
It's looking good, Gary.
Yeah, thank you. And if our, thank you, Jay. And if our exceeded anything I could have ever imagined. And I think it's a, a very good addition to West Jordan City and it was very carefully thought out, meetings with the neighbors, lots of advice from the commission and from the council. And again, I'm just very proud of that. Again, I come to you as, as a public servant. I am the, the chairperson in the, of the Riverton City Planning Commission. So I am very of the Riverton City Planning Commission. So, I am very eh adequate in what you guys are dealing with on a, on a regular basis. And I applaud the effort that you put in and, and, and I learned from you. And eh, you know, with that, I eh, I, I, did have any questions fielded my way. This is, this is a unique situation. I, I gave a pretty good summary of what's happened on this property. This is a, we're going on three years when I first presented this to the, to the city. Eh, it's unique in the fact that we have a low-income apartment complex to the north. We have a goat dairy to the west. Eh, we have eh a commercial office zoning to the south. And it's just a really unique property. And I felt like we've done the best we could. And then we've ran into a number of challenges, which I'm coming to you now to see what we can do to get this zoning approved for moving forward with single-family homes. Thank you.
Eh, any questions for, for Gary? Okay, eh, we'll turn this over to staff. Larry, it seems like it's yours.
Yeah. And so, Matt, you were probably the only one on the planning commission when eh Parker Place was rezoned and approved eh a few years ago. I could be wrong, but I believe you're the only one. Um, and so Parker Place was originally eh rezoned to an R-three-eight zone with a senior housing overlay. And so, what that means is the, the properties or the homes will be restricted to eh fifty-five and older community. There's restrictions in the ordinance such it has to be eh, all the eh entrances have to be slab-on-grade. There's no basements eh, that type of thing. Anything that will be conducive to eh the senior community. Not a lot of stairs, that type of thing. Eh, Mr. Cannon has run into some issues eh with the development of the site. The sewer line he discovered was much, much shallower than eh was anticipated or was not. It was much shallower than our city standards eh currently allow. And so, that required the elevation of eh the homes. Eh, so now they have to be a home that's accessed with stairs. And so, that makes it eh not possible to build eh this, the slab-on-grade type homes. There was also a very costly eh irrigation line that is actually serves to as an air cityer, excuse me, city storm drain line that goes into an irrigation eh box. He had to eh put that there, put in pipe that was up to city standards to carry the storm drain flow. So, he's had um some initial eh expenses that have become eh onerous. There was also two-hundred-and-eighty or three-hundred-thousand-dollar fee from, from UDOT to um eh, to connect to the sewer line in Redwood Road. And so, that was a costly bore. And, and so, you know, there has been additional expenses. And the issue with the eh bringing the houses out of the ground, it'll make it impossible to follow the senior housing overlay. And none of those were eh his fault. They, there were things that eh just occurred as he was discovering this, he was designing the project. And so, with the removal of the, the senior housing overlay, the density will not change one bit. The, the housing type, which is single-family, eh will not eh change. Eh, nothing on the subdivision plat that I have up currently eh will change. What will be built in there are homes similar to what is being constructed eh Ganson Lane on the corner of Gardner Lane and thirteen-hundred west. Those approved a few years back eh with the addition that the, these lots are larger than Ganson Lane. And so, they will be single-family. They just won't be restricted to eh senior housing. I've looked through um the ordinance and, and really eh that R-three-eight zone is probably the preferable zone because it allows four-thousand-square-foot lots. And most of these lots are in the four-to-five-thousand eh range. If the senior housing overlay, if you say this rezoned on R-one-five or something, then that would be eh, you'd have to go back and eh re-subdivide or amend the subdivision. And that may change the layout of, of the subdivision at this time. And so, I think that his eh request is eh duly justified. And I, I don't think that it will change eh the neighborhood any with the type of housing that eh he will be building. It just won't be all senior housing. So, not saying that somebody fifty-five or older couldn't buy it. They could, could buy a home, but it will allow people, eh younger people to buy the homes also. So, staff recommends the, the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council.
So, my, my first question I have um is eh, I, I can see that everything, everything on paper looks the same. But what are the, the, the benefits, the values of having the senior housing was of a fifty-five pluses that we were going to have much, many fewer cars coming in and out of this road, going on the Redwood Road. And I'm concerned that by opening this up to single-family, then now we're gonna have two, three, four car, four cars in any one of these houses that are gonna crowd up the streets, they're gonna crowd up the, the, the driveways on these smaller lots and all coming in and out on Drake Lane, which will be a problem getting onto Redwood, which will be a problem for the, the Drake family with their farm. That, that does make me a little bit concerned. I don't know if anybody else shares that concern, but that's my first thing that I look at and, and have a concern about.
Can I address that real quick?
Sure.
Thank you. And thank you for that. Um, this street was built to city standards. Um, Drake Lane or, or the Drake Goat Farm is not gonna be there forever. And eventually, this will be an access point for the five acres that the Drake Farm, Goat Farm now inhabits. And we have eh, I, I can't predict eh what the traffic count is going to be going into the future. Eh, but I know that eh this, this is a city street. And while the Drake Farm is in place, we all go, we are going to honor and accommodate. There's, there's also another business that sits back there on three acres. And, you know, there's, there's construction traffic as well as the, the eh, eh, the people who, who frequent the Drake Farm and buy from them. But this, there will be two entrances to the Drake property eventually, and this will be one of them and maybe the main one. And eh, it, it was built to accommodate the excess traffic, not just now, but going into the future. And, and I appreciate your concern because it was our, our concern as well when we, when we put this in.
Eh, I, I guess my, I, my concern isn't whether Drake Lane will handle this. I, I would assume that this road would be built to accommodate eh if many more cars than even what we're anticipating here. My, my bigger concern is, is the traffic that's gonna be dumping onto Redwood Road. And while I appreciate that the Drake Farm probably will not be there forever, it is there now. Um, you know, and so, I'm sensitive to what their, their concerns are. And quite frankly, on a personal level, when the Drake Farm does get developed, my neighborhood is the other access point to this eh to going towards the north down Executive Drive. So, you know, I, I know exactly what this is. These are, this is my neighborhood. These are gonna be m- my neighbors. And I don't have a problem with that. I just am concerned about the number of truck cars and the number of the, 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 the traffic that we're going to be turning in and out onto Redwood Road, which is already overly congested. I, I just, I, 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 I walk or run with my dog every morning down Redwood Road and just watch how many cars are trying to get in and out, out of the apartments and across the street. Just adding this much traffic to one more road onto this, especially as it's right next to the school access there. It just, it all makes me just very nervous that we're gonna be putting way too much congestion right there in that one spot. Anybody else have questions for staff or for, for the applicant?
I have a question for the applicant.
Go for it.
Is Drake Lane going to have street parking available or any of the other eh, see Drake Park Court or Pearson Park Court? Is there gonna be any street parking available or allowed?
I, I'd have to eh reflect that back to eh Larry eh to address that. I know that the Drake Farm has very adequate parking for their needs currently. Eh, this, when we developed eh this conceptual plan, eh it met all of the eh excess parking as well as it has a, an office commercial site there on the south eh for, that I'm sure will be utilized during the day. But in the evening, if they're eh, I can't stay in the future going, you know, moving forward, what eh, what type of an office will be there. But I, there's probably a ninety percent chance it will not eh have any eh people utilizing the parking there in the evenings. But I know that the subdivision was built to um, with the two car garages and the driveways. Eh, Larry may be able to add any additional comments there that I'm not aware of. But I know that when we did it, it met city standards for the additional parking.
So, the Drake Lane meets eh city center for eh neighborhood street, fifty-something feet wide. Eh, I don't see any reason to prohibit parking on this street. And now, if it becomes an issue, that certainly can be taken up with the engineering department. But I think at this point on paper, there's no reason to prohibit parking. They, all the units eh meet the current parking requirements of the ordinance, the two-car garage plus additional spaces on the driveway. So.
I have a question. Was a traffic study done eh with this new housing? And is there an option to do just eh like a right turn only coming out of Redwood to help eh, you know, prevent any particular accidents of people trying to turn left?
I don't recall if eh a traffic study was done for this eh development. It is, it is rather small to require a traffic study. However, UDOT may have required one. I don't know. That would, maybe Gary can remember.
Yes, thanks, Pamela. There was one done on this one and the subdivision to the north, Sunset Hills, which I also eh ran concurrently at the time. Eh, interestingly enough, the Sunset Hills eh, Sunset Vista, I apologize, is also eh in the SHA, SHO zoning. And they have, I, I wanna, I wanna say I'm the victim of my successes and my not successes. And that one, we haven't, I sold that to a builder and he has not sold a house in there at this time eh, to my knowledge. When I drove by there today, there was still not a, any holes built in there, so eh, or dug. And, and so, I'm eh, Brinkerhoff Bluffs, this subdivision and Sunset Vista's were all done concurrently with each other. And eh Brinkerhoff Bluffs, interestingly enough, is sold out, all the lots in there. And that was a mixed-use development with um a senior housing overlay as well as eh single-family homes. And, and it appears to be doing very well. Eh, Sunset Vista's, I don't know why the, the, I don't know why that hasn't had any in there. So, we're, we're kind of a eh, the market is dictating price and, and size of lots. And, and, and that's kinda what I have to go by as well. There was a traffic study done on Sunset Vista's and it did accommodate um the traffic count on the both of these, especially with eh Drake Lane when it eventually develops. And I would hope that the people would use it, utilize this access eh more so than going off on this seventieth south. But I can't control that.
Any other questions for staff? All right, let's open this up to the public. If there's anybody here that wants to speak on this item, please eh feel free to raise your hand.
Matt, I'm gonna unmute eh Jeanette Drake.
Okay.
I think.
I was just gonna ask if she wanted to speak. I'm, I would, I would be very interested to hear what she has to say.
I really didn't have anything to say. I'm just listening.
Now, you, 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 are you in favor of this?
Um, no, I.
How do you feel about this?
There's pros and cons.
We're farmers. I was just to soon see it be farmland, but it's too late now. So, let's go ahead with it.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'd, I'd like to speak again if I can. I.
Well, Gary, we'll give you a second. Gary, we'll give you a second after we close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Eh, unless anybody has any objection, I move that we, we give the floor back to Gary for a moment.
I.
Anybody wanna second that for me?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? All right, Gary, go for it.
Thank you. And I, and I know the protocol. I apologize for trying to put any.
This, this Zoom thing makes it weird.
This has been, yeah. Eh, interestingly enough, in Riverton, we are letting the public, I'm, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but we're letting the public come into the, into our chamber now and, and actually giving them a voice. And I, like I said, I, I kinda prefer this. But the Drakes have been very, very patient. And the fact that they're kind of neutral on um, on their opinion of this, I understand. This has been very hard on them economically because we've had to eh, we've had to tear up the road eh to do the excavating. We, we found out that the power line, the electrical line, the water line, the irrigation line, which also was a storm drain, that all ran up their lane. We had to find an alternative entrance into their property. And they have been extremely cooperative. And we have very regular discussions. And maybe not as, as, as quickly as they would like, but um, we've tried to do the best we could, being a good neighbor. And when it's all done, eh, it's gonna be a great thing. And they're gonna have um, they're gonna have a nice paved road going to their property, which they've never had since that's open. And it, it has been a pain in the butt for the last five, six months, but it, it, it's gonna end up being really great. And I eh, and I appreciate my relationship going forward with them into the future because I feel like we've become good friends. There's been a lot of challenges, but we're, we're getting it done. And um, I hope they feel the same way. They're good people.
Okay. Eh, any, eh, any other discussion for this, guys? Commissioner Bloom?
Oh, no, I was just gonna go and make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council.
I'll second that. I'm sorry, I missed that. Who said? Was that you, Jay?
Yes, that was me.
Okay. Given a motion by Commissioner Bloom, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Any discussion to the motion? I see none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? Okay. Let's get her done, Gary. We are unanimous on this one. Um, unless anybody has anything else. We have our next meeting in two weeks. Eh, TBD on location. Just pay attention for that, guys. Look for your emails. If you haven't done that eh survey yet that was sent out, please get that done. Um, anything else I'm missing?
Mark, you're adjourned.
Okay, we are adjourned. We'll see you guys in two weeks. Have a good night.
Thanks. We'll see ya.